Serve the king.
Unversöglich! Our current Waffenarsenal is a joke, and on top of that, the army was requisitioning from it.
Big white.
Should the town reserve have weapons than any Hooper in the domain?
What are you getting at, Eldress?
I'm saying that the bandits who freed Hinnick, the Dry Devil, used that thing... that hackenbücher.
Who was it?
Handcannon. Are you deaf or something? Wine. White.
Boy, can you believe it? Where did they get them? You're the one who should know where they got them, since you're a gunsmith.
Sir.
What are you implying, Freitas?
Thank you, waiter.
All I'm saying is that they had them, Herr Gott. It is Heiner Schande when outlaws have better weapons than the shit garrison.
I'm sorry, I wasn't paying attention.
And Herr König surely knows this too.
What is it, Eldress? You smell a deal.
I gotta keep watch.
What I smell is that your stoppin' heads do not realize what schwierigkeiten this is.
Waiter, get me wine.
The Dry Devil is running free. Der Raubräder everywhere in the region.
Wanna wait? At your service, sir.
We have the army bearing down, and you want to defend yourselves with a few rusty hel birds?
Sorry.
Well, thank the Lord.
And who is it you want to fight exactly? The merciful King Sigismund is providing us with protection, isn't he?
Der König and his army will not be here forever.
Waiter, pour me red wine.
Shut up! The king can arrive at any moment. What if he heard you?
What then? We're sitting atop the biggest silver heap in the kingdom, and we're supposed to defend it with roots?
Monastery wine here!
Right, Eldress, but where can we get the coin for better equipment?
Sorry.
We can always confiscate the property of the king's enemies. Nicht wahr?
Well, thank the Lord.
We are more than familiar with the yemelish state of our armory, and the king is surely aware of it as well. Maybe if he waived some of the taxes.
The king fears that this town will rise against him. He'll take the arming of the city's militia as a preparation for war.
So you suggest we just wait with arms crossed for the Raubräder to wreak havoc all around?
Your mercy, sir. We can always ask the king to bring order to the realm with his army.
But then the Dürfler will rise up.
I'm afraid I see no solution of the current situation. We shall wait and see what His Majesty thinks about the matter. Maybe we can change his mind. Vielleicht.
I'd like to report to the Honorable Council on the cleanliness of the city and the state of the public baths.
You mean baths or brothels?
Ha ha ha. Isn't it the same thing?
Waiter, my cup is empty. Pour me some wine.
So the cleanliness of the city is not what it should be. The current baths in the city fall far short of the proper citizens' needs.
Yes, sir. Going up right here. Got your weight.
You're right, Jerome, but a woman named Betty has stood up for upbringing.
Be glad I can hardly sit on a ride. Otherwise, I'd go for that white myself.
We bear the hearts that you bear. She's a protege of mine.
Well, thank the Lord.
Her efforts are commendable, but I don't think she will succeed. She takes a firm hand, soft feminine fingers.
A moment ago, you were complaining there weren't enough baths. Couldn't we support her?
Boy, come here. Something like this is better handled by trustworthy people, like my friend, bathhouse proprietor Adam. The need for cleanliness and citizens' health should not be underestimated.
Hey, waiter. Nor overestimated. Someone needs to wash the river.
More wine, Master Bailiff?
I have enough wine. Come closer.
Certainly. And they can get leeches there for free as well. And why?
I need something from you. There is an item in my study that I confiscated from a female thief. She thought she could wriggle out of it by telling me who the item belongs to.
And what is it?
A silver goblet. She sneaked into Sir Ullrich's house and stole it. No one's noticed this yet, but if Ullrich finds out, he'll turn the city upside down to find the culprit. Go and get it, and don't you make a mess there, understand?
Where can I find this gobbler?
Use your eyes and come right back.
finally admit that it's a trifle, we wouldn't have to keep coming back to it. A trifle. Do you ever walk the streets here? Sewage, rats, slop and rubbish. The least we can do for the citizens is to provide them with a place to wash up. What nonsense. Next, you're wanting to sell wine to everyone for free too?
Nice. He's silverware, Miss Bishop.
Why not? In Jerome Nars's earthly paradise, every...
So, did you find it?
I did, Master Bailiff. Here it is.
Not so loud. Show it here. Hmm. That's it. And now go back to your job.
I got word that Rutard has pulled off another deed. Just for...
That's nothing unusual. That old weasel will never accept that the city isn't run his way, at least until His Majesty honors us with his visit. And as we know, Gungsin absolutely hates him.
Waiter, pour me red wine.
He can hurt all he wants.
Get red. Red wine.
As long as he does no damage. Ulrich, what have you got to say about it?
Me? Well, uh, I'm not sure what you're implying.
Monastery wine. Here.
Horseshit! You know full well everybody knows he wiped the floor with you.
Sir.
Compose yourself, Adam, and stop drinking. The king might come any time now.
Well, thank the Lord.
That's right. Let's not burden the anointed monarch with such... Me? Compose myself. Me? I beg your pardon. I... I demand that you...
Ruhe! Franz, please continue. Tokai and a full cup.
I'm speaking about the Rutard incident. You were there, weren't you?
Oh, that. Just a small misunderstanding. We've sorted it out and everything's settled. My ears must be deceiving me. Are you defending Rudhard? Besides, if his men attack yours, as I've heard, then we have a good reason to punish him.
Are they only just pressing the graves for their Tokai?
What happened there? Leave nothing out.
I don't like Rutard, true, but in this case it clearly was nothing.
Sorry.
Everyone in the city has been murdered.
Hope it's safe. I hope it's pretty local.
Thank you, waiter. I heard there were several dead.
Did you? That's grossly exaggerated. I don't think Rutard will cause any trouble. He is sensible enough not to draw attention to himself while the king is here.
That's true, because if we don't do something about him, the king himself will put an end to him, and soon.
Hey waiter, pour me some to come.
Uh, white one.
Unless he puts an end to us first. God knows what he wants to tell us.
If nothing happens, there's no point in dwelling on it. Let's move on.
Sir.
I'm sorry, Andreas, but I wouldn't brush it off so quickly. Why do I have the feeling you're not telling us the whole truth, Ullrich? Are you accusing me of lying?
Those are strong words, my friend. Nobody said anything like that, did they?
Then why doesn't he tell us what really happened? Hmm?
What? Oh, what?
I'm not keeping anything from you, but there's little truth to the rumors circulating around the town. Yes, Rutard and I had a little disagreement, but we ended it quickly because his daughter wanted to get involved. I didn't want to expose the girl to any unpleasant sights. So, Rutard is hiding behind his own daughter's skirts?
As if it wasn't enough that he sent his son to die defending the city.
Alright, if we really don't have anything new to say, let's turn the page.
Things have got out of order in the town. Some adventurers decided to take the law into their own hands and restore the tradition of duels. It's not only barbaric, but also illegal. If we tolerate this, the rabble in the city will go wild and do whatever they want. I suspect the gentlemen from the city sword fighting school brought this custom to us. That German, Menhard, is just hanging around the market looking for trouble.
I'd like some monastery wine. Here, fill my cup, boy.
Don't be ridiculous, Foursucker. You act like you've never been in a fight yourself. And to accuse a swords master without a shred of proof. We're not some old fishwives on the market.
Sir.
Don't hang around me. Vanish, you hear me?
So, you are dissuaded me. Proven offenses are punished by failing.
Easy. Okay, I'm getting away.
And that's that. There are more pressing matters to deal with.
Come here, Ramon.
More pressing than the open contempt of the whole town garrison. The guards are apparently settling accounts their own way. We'll soon be the laughing stock of the whole town.
Refill, sir.
Do you think I come to the council just to guzzle wine?
Can I help you with that?
I left my gloves in the chapel. I took them off to pray, but then I rushed here and forgot to take them. I can't just get up and walk out now. But if you disappear for a little while...
All right. I'll get them.
I knew I could count on you. While you're at it, count how many figures on the mural have wings. Because I'm bored, and because I told you. Get on with it.
I get anywhere like this, we waste our time.
Here are the gloves.
Hmm. That was easy enough. And he wanted me to count the winged figures.
One, two, three, four, five. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, eleven, twelve, thirteen, twenty-four. Twenty-four maybe? I don't know. Let's see. Look up this guy.
So, let's see what you've got for me.
I found your gloves, sir.
Really? Let's see them. And did you count those winged figures?
Twenty-four.
I counted twenty-four, sir.
And you counted correct. Good. Here you are, so you can have a bit of fun in the evening too, eh?
Yes, yes.
And so has the eternal dispute over the cathedrals. The building of the church is trekkron, and in the meantime, they are calling the Oceania pilgrimages to seddlts. Light under our noses. It's just a village with the monasteries, and they are going to make a royal mining city.
Cause you're looking at me.
You there, lad. A couple of bread. And don't you spimp on me.
Why can't we build faster? Hire more craftsmen, start with night shifts.
Because those so-called craftsmen are a band of parasites. You pay them, they come back, or report sick, and if they do come, their work is shit, and you have to pay someone else to put it right.
I heard red.
Monastery wine here.
Sir.
About time.
Right. It's a waste of time. I- I- I tell you, a waste of time. Adam, don't interrupt the proceedings with your drunken ranting. Even if you are in the right. And as for you, Enderlin, haven't you noticed there's a war going on? Are the experts from far off supposed to work in a city under siege?
That is cool, though.
Hey boy, a full cup of monastery wine.
Besides, I get the feeling there's something other than the welfare of the city behind your complaints.
Oh, you do. Do you? And what would that be?
Sir.
Like, for instance, that you'd like to have your own altar there.
Good. Now run on.
So what if I would?
Hold your horses, gentlemen. That space in the side nave is mine.
When hell freezes over, my friend, your place is at least two steps behind mine.
A swabsmith dares to insult me? Ha! I think not.
Boy, I'd like some wine.
Excuse me.
I heard white.
You wanted to buy yourself an altar in the cathedral, just like you bought yourself a seat in this council.
How dare you! I acquired my seat for the services our guild provided. It still provides to the crown.
Boy, are you deaf or something? Wine. White.
I heard red. Sorry dude. Whoa, sorry dude. I hit the phone up.
Well, I hope you're not supplying equipment to the army. If that's all they have, they would be defeated by that bunch of ne'er-do-wells from the Alaus or Obrink.
What ne'er-do-wells?
Those wrestlers of theirs, of course.
Probably gonna be drink and talk.
In the form of the whole town going to watch them brawl.
Oh, this isn't to me.
Because it has all been sorted out. Not long ago, the guards raided and threw them all out.
Ah yes, I had forgotten. What do we have to discuss next?
Nope. It's here. Is he gonna come?
I'm telling ya, something is being planned.
Oh, I doubt it. No one's gonna tackle Ruthard.
Just caught in the middle. There he is.
Me? You have nothing to fear, not you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Unlike this plan of files!
That was the other meeting they went to.
Come now, father. Put a little life into your dying. See more cheerful priests at funerals.
I'd rather be at one than here. I hoped I'd never see this fortress again in my life.
Unpleasant memories?
You have no idea. I didn't part ways with my father on entirely good terms. Twenty years ago.
And now you're two decades older and wiser. At your Ujitz parish, you spread the word of God to your flock, and you saved my neck and Henry's too. I'd say your father should be proud of you.
None of that matters a damn to him.
Who knows? Maybe that twenty years has changed a thing or two.
You know what? Let's drop the subject. Do you know any of the guests here?
Most of them I'm seeing for the first time in my life. It's a pretty varied company. We've had bandits, nobles, burglars, a priest, and even a rabbi coming together here. It's like the start of some joke.
Wait a moment. Rabbi, you say? The Kuttenberg rabbi?
Yeah. He came with a retinue. But for now, they're keeping mostly to themselves. Maybe you should go and welcome some of them. After all, this used to be your home. And you're a spiritual man too, so you should have something in common.
I wouldn't be too sure, but I suppose I can try. Who's that French fellow you brought here from Maleishov?
The great Baron Brabant. Been everywhere, knows everything, and has the keys to half the kingdom. He's got more fairy tales than my old nanny.
Can he be trusted?
He's a blabbermouth, but a harmless one. Besides, he defended Kuttenberg, and you know how that went. If he were on Sigismund's side, he'd hardly have been locked up with me.
Mm. Hopefully.
I'll do, yes.
I wanna talk to you.
I'd rather creep off into some corner with a full wineskin. But I suppose I'll have to introduce myself to the rest of the guests, eh?
Indeed you should. After all, you are one of the lords of Rabbosh.
Oh, don't start with that. I'd like to steer clear of the old man as long as I can.
In that case, you should sound out Radzig and Hanush and find out what they're actually planning.
Meet. Meet Barban. Rabbi. Just for. Where's the...
Good day to you, friend.
Where's the...
Good health to you, sir. I'm Godwin. A friend of that lad you arrived with, Henry. We don't know each other.
Baron Vauclain Brabant, Chevalier d'Arête. I am a warrior, a traveler, a strategist, and a-
My word. Isn't that exhausting?
Ben oh, and I'm glad to meet a new friend.
It's a pleasure to make your acquaintance, Baron. I knew right away we'd hit it off. How did you end up imprisoned in Maleishov?
Ah, c'est une histoire compliquée. It was after I irrationally led the defense of Gutenberg and only lost it narrowly by an unfortunate turn of events.
That needs some explanation. What unfortunate turn of events?
Oh, misère. It is clear-
So, be so kind as to enlighten me.
When they broke through the defense, I ended up in captivity. It was only due to my acquaintances in court that I escaped execution.
Oh. I thought it was Henry who saved your neck.
My neck was not at risk in Maleishov. I may have still been a prisoner, but my personal freedom restricted. But they never broke my spirit.
Where have you been on your travels? Have you seen the ocean?
But of course. If you are interested in my greatest journeys, then I have traveled with a merchant caravan all the way to the Ottoman Empire. And if you are interested in my greatest deed, then that was perhaps saving the life of the King of France.
And you wouldn't by any chance know the Pope personally?
Which one do you mean? I spoke briefly with Bonifaz de Nine when I was sojourning in Rome. A pleasant fellow.
You say you're a poet? How about a verse or two?
Jabel! This poetry nothing but a fuss to you. Is a poet a gesture for amusement? I think not. To recite requires the proper mood. And besides, few here would understand me.
How come almost nobody here knows you?
I am operating, as they say, un cognito. My great benefit is my strong connection with the French court. There, everyone knows my name. Here in Bohemia.
That's enough for you. Um.
Such rare guests. One wouldn't expect to find among Christians representatives of your community. I'm Godwin. My greetings to you.
Peace be with you. Neither would one expect a priest here, and yet...
How do you know I'm a priest?
It's not difficult to tell. After all, we have much in common, and we are both a little on unfamiliar ground here. I'm Yehuda, leader of the Rabbinical Court in the Sacred Community, and this is Samuel, my aide.
Who would rather not be here at all? Why did we have to come here, Zade? Can you not see every-
Because we all need to help each other in this. And why would they not stare when you are frowning so?
Are you here to arrange some trade?
We have more serious matters to attend to here. The situation in the town and the kingdom is unsustainable. The whole land is on the brink of destruction. You have men and weapons. We have the means to sustain them.
Why are you telling this to a coymer? You wanted to deliver what we brought to the margrave and quickly leave.
Everything in good time, Samuel. We have ju-
Did you come to lend money to the lords?
Not to lent, but to give. Help given to the needy is repaid only by God.
You don't even know if you can trust them. With that money, we could have paid mercenaries ourselves. You remind me of my young friend Henry. He's a bit of a hothead too. Henry? That messenger of Radzig Kobula? You know each other? You're both around the same age. That would be him. But we did not get off to a very good start. Or maybe you'll get to know each other better. He should be coming here later, by the way. For a young stripling, he's been through plenty. It's not so long since his parents were killed in Skalitz. He was supposed to become a blacksmith, and instead, he's roaming the world, risking his neck at every turn. Wait. A blacksmith, you say? From Skalitz? Aye, that's right. Did you know anyone there? I knew of someone. A blacksmith by the name of Martin.
My daughter knew him most, and that is why Samuel is in this world. For our numerous sins.
Oh, maybe he was my father, but he certainly didn't act like one. Ma raised me on her own.
And that was all for the best.
Why? He should have taken care of me, but instead he fathered another bastard. Don't make hasty judgments. As far as I know, Martin didn't have any other children.
Wait a minute. What the hell?
At least none of his own. He took in Henry and raised him as his own, on the orders of the Lord of Skalitz, Sir Radzik Kobula, Henry's real father. I don't care if you took care of twenty other mamsas.
That boy's blood father denied him, just like yours did to you.
A person can't choose their parents. And Henry only found out about it recently. Enough. I'd rather have a drink. Will you have one too, Zade?
For that, there will be more suitable times.
Good health.
Lachim.
That's what's out of your pocket.
Dear friends and allies, in these troublesome times, you all know why we're here. The question remains, what to do next? Sigismund is facing troubles in Hungary, and here too, he is up against resistance. He's a capable strategist, but a poor diplomat. Mark my words, if we wait him out until winter, he will leave of his own accord.
By winter, he'll have torched all our fortresses and carried off everything that we possess.
Are we seriously gonna wait and cower in a corner, or are we gonna drive them out in shame? A few well-planned raids and we could have him in our fists!
At what price? Have you got men to spare? Has any of you got men and money to spare?
We don't have men out there.
Yes, we do.
We do not.
Jobst is right. That horse son won't fall easily.
Only we can't wait.
Are we to get ourselves killed? Or...
End with nothing?
Friends, we'll get nowhere like this. Let's adorn ourselves and try to think it through.
Well, that went just as expected.
Good health.
And to yours. Could it have gone any other way when there's so many of us here? I would have expected a bit more sense from Jobst of all people. He made an amateur's mistake, but it's hard to be angry with him when he's trying to ingratiate himself with everyone. By the way, I'm John of Liechtenstein, and you must be Godwin, the son of...
There he is. John.
That's not a thing I've ever boasted of. How do you know that?
I have my sources. From what I've heard about you, I'd judge you could be quite useful to me at today's gathering.
Is that so?
Indeed. And that's why I'd like to ask something of you.
As it happens, I've got nothing better to do anyway.
Excellent. I expect we can agree that Jobst's plan has certain... shortcomings?
That's a weak word.
And the way it stands at the moment, he'll never get the support of the council. But I have an idea how to change that.
Well... I'm curious how you hope to shut Ziska up and satisfy the ones who want peace.
We'll sit and wait quietly until Sigismund withdraws of his own volition, as Jobst proposes. But we'll be waiting in the military camp of our huge new army.
When Sigismund sees that, he'll be off to Hungary all the sooner. At a gallop.
Exactly. Sigismund's army is demoralized and weakened. And besides, he's running out of resources. He's able to tackle fortresses that aren't able to defend themselves. But he won't engage an equal force on the battlefield.
But he can't retreat either. That would be a disgrace.
And that's exactly why we'll wait until he's called back to Hungary by events there. For the plan to work, we need allies. Their money and their determination. We've already set the ground for it. We just need negotiators who will push the right people in the right direction.
Are you saying you set everything in motion even before Jobst?
More like in parallel. But without his knowledge. If we find support and make it look like the whole thing was his idea, we'll all win.
You've got an interesting way of approaching things.
You're certainly not the first to tell me that. I take it as a compliment.
Why are you doing all this anyway?
Because I want to put a stop to the senseless deaths. And also because I'm happier with wenceslas on the Bohemian throne.
I'll help you. What exactly should I do?
I'll give you three names. Botzek of Kunstadt, Haman Alder, and Anna of Walstein. If you can get those three on our side, we've won the day. Meanwhile, I'll take care of Jobst.
I'll get on it then. Wish me luck.
I wish us both luck.
Success to our plans.
And sweeps out his pocket. Alright. Let's go find these guys.
I didn't tell you anything?
Not even Botzek?
Not even Botzek. And he's a great lord.
That's hard to believe.
Martin likes to ex-
I'd like to check your horses out. And see if they're as good as you say.
Pah, even better. But you won't believe it until you see for yourself.
And you might not believe your eyes when you do see them. Well, well. We have a new guest.
I wanted to...
You wanted to apologize for crashing into my home without a by-your-leave? Or to arrest my guests some more?
I want to have a word with Alder.
Well, I'm having a word with you.
I apologize, Father.
For interrupting our conversation? Or just for being you?
Is that your...
Unfortunately. Speak up then. What are you doing here?
I came with a delegation from Sir Hanush of Leipa.
Is this a joke?
Why so strict, Martin?
Twenty years ago, he was nothing but a cheeky- I got him a place at the Archbishopry. To have some sense beaten into his head. Only it wasn't long before they kicked him out. And then, I find out he's settled in some backwater parish in Sasa. But he took his boozing and whoring along with him. Lost everything and then-
Try saying it again a little louder. They might not have heard you in the outer courtyard.
You have the impertinence to show me your face? After the way you described-
You're exaggerating. Like you've always done.
Me? A- Your whores wandering around as if they owned the place!
Aye. Actually, anything fun was strictly banned under your roof. But maybe you ought to try it yourself sometime. Then maybe you wouldn't be such a bitter old roach.
You're dishonoring your host.
I can't dishonor someone who has no honor! If you had any, you'd be-
That's enough!
Christopher.
You won't get away with those insults. I challenge you to a duel.
I refuse to fight. I'm here as an envoy, not a jester.
You've got no other option. You insulted Father's honor.
Gentlemen, surely there's no need for violence. I can have a word in private with Lord Oderin. Um, the second. As he desires, and then...
Out of the question. This uncouth lad needs a lesson. And he's got plenty to learn from Christopher. By God's grace-
You want satisfaction? You'll get nothing but shame. As always. Suit yourself then. We'll fight. Come to the outer courtyard, but quietly. We don't-
After you.
Well, that's that.
Shouldn't we rather...
No, Christopher will-
Make room for us. We'll just settle a very private matter. It's an honorable duel, man against man. Stay back!
Cover your right side! You've got a gap there that can drive a car through! Lift arm lower!
That was sneaky. Fucking- You're fast. You wanna try me?
Son of a fucker. Matter of standing well.
Come on then!
Not bad for a priest.
Otherwise the first strike will put you on your arse!
Show your stuff!
What's wrong with your legs?
That was sneaky.
Look in my eyes, not at my sword!
That will do. My god. Where did you learn to wield a sword like-
Father always said you were a good-for-nothing booser. Though you could teach sword fighting in the school. You know how it is. The countryside is tough. It's dog-eat-dog. And you ought to know yourself. Not all the faults that Father sees are real.
Aye. Well... I apologize for going off like that. I had to, so that-
So Father would be satisfied. I know. Only he'll never be satisfied. And the sooner you realize that, the better.
I thought he was the way he was because his first son let him down. And he hoped at least his second would become something.
Not at all. I remember him the same since I was a nipper. When I was six years old, I fell off a horse and broke my leg. He wouldn't talk to me for a week because I'd let him down.
The first time he took me hunting, he let me starve for three days until I was able to shoot my first hare.
Only three days? He got soft.
I always wondered who you were. There was never much talk about you at home.
Look, I really did fuck up everything I could. I brolled and boozed until they threw me out of my- But now, I have a chance to put things to rights a little.
And that's why you want to talk to Alder?
I've got to get him on our side and to cooperate with us.
Aren't we all on the same side?
Maybe everyone's saying that. But it's time to put it into action.
After your encounter with Father, it won't be easy to get to Alder. Actually, I don't think you should even attempt it. Unless you want to anger Father even more.
What else can I do, though?
I'll talk to him myself. He'll hear me out for sure. But you'll have to trust me. And tell me what it's all about.
Do I have any choice?
If it's really that important, you don't.
Alright then. You've heard Jobst's plan, right? It's a nice idea, but we can't wait around without an army to back us up.
Only no one's going to pay for one, because that would be an outright admission of rebelling against Sigismund.
Alder's got some clout with the counselors and burglars who are loyal to Sigismund. If he agrees, they'll follow.
I expect Alder's not the only one you're after.
You got that right.
Leave Alder to me. The plan sounds sensible and he's no fool.
I don't know how to thank you.
You can drag me to a tavern sometime. Hard doesn't need to know about it.
You're starting to sound like a br-
Thank you, sir. No, I'm not. There. I'll be downstairs now.
Burgers, patricians, and usurers. They're without honor.
We're trying to forge an alliance against our common enemy.
They're trying to do one thing- Sir Botzek, I need to speak with you for a moment.
A man hardly puts his cup to his lips and someone comes along. Jobst comes up with a plan as full of holes as a beggar's shoes. And now you're all jostling to win me over for him.
On the contrary. I've come here with an idea how to improve it.
Does that improvement include a few thousand men at arms? If not, you can go to the devil with it.
A few thousand men at arms has a convincing argument. And a hundred horsemen on top. Only in order to get them, we need coin.
You've got my attention, but not my money yet.
How can I persuade you?
I need guarantees of security. I don't want to end up like Brutal.
Of course. Once it comes to protecting property, ideals go out the window.
You can talk, since you haven't got a pot to piss in yourself. If you were in my position, you'd think differently. I have a lot of property, lots of subjects to look after. And along with that, the Lord blessed me with a large family. I can't risk it all in a conflict with Sigismund.
So you need guarantees that you won't be left standing in the cold if you openly oppose Sigismund?
My guarantee is called Yitka. She's my niece. If I succeeded in marrying her off to another stronghold, I'll have the certainty that I won't be left alone.
Maybe it's enough to find a suitable groom among the allies.
Perhaps. Someone of suitable standing, who Yitka would also gladly accept. I don't want her to be unhappy.
I believe Liechtenstein is single.
And an uncertain party. Besides, he's inconvenient for Sigismund. Yitka could end up being a pawn to blackmail both of us.
How about young Lord Capon?
He's a youngster still.
He may be young, but... he's got something between his ears. He's got bad experience. And when he gets the estate that's his by right, he'll be well secured for life.
If he gets it. Right now, Hanush lords over Rattay and seems quite happy with that state of affairs. On the other hand, the Lords of Leipa have a good reputation. And Hanush can always be relied on despite his temper. Maybe it's not such a bad idea.
So... will you support our plan?
You're selling the skin of a bore that's still grunting. First, I want a confirmation that the wedding will take place, as soon as possible.
And what if Lord Capon refuses?
I don't care what the young lord thinks. Hanush is the one to decide. If he agrees, I'll be happy to support your plan.
Pushing a friend to tie their knot to save the kingdom. Things have come to a pretty pass.
The kingdom will not forget his sacrifice. Now stop dilly-dallying and go and tell Hanush.
Take a look at that.
Sir Hanush, I bring happy tidings.
You do? Let's hear it then.
I've gained us a powerful ally.
And who is it? I hope it's not one of those Cottenberg stuffed guts.
On the contrary. It's Botzek, the elder of Kunstadt and Podivera.
Kunstadt? By Christ, he's the last one I'd have expected to step up. How the hell did you do it?
Well... I explained to him how such an alliance could be mutually beneficial.
Mutually? What do you mean?
He's got a pretty serious personal interest in this...
Come on.
Uh, bond.
Stop beating around the bush and spit out what you promised him.
Lord Kunstadt has a niece. So... I arranged a betrothal for young Lord Capon, with your blessing if you agree.
Hans Capon is to marry Yitka of Kunstadt. Godwin, you conniving old bastard! Oh, fuck. I don't believe it. So, young Hans is to marry Kunstadt's daughter? Niece? If you're serious, I'll make sure that you get the Rattay parish!
Or you could make me the abbot of Sasa. Or what about a bishop, brig?
Forget it. Soon I'll be paying for a wedding. Not a word to Hans. I want to tell him myself. But let's drink to it, shall we?
Oh, you did agree upon her.
Cheers! Cheers to you! And to your parlaying skills!
Sir Botzek, your niece Yitka can start preparing for her wedding.
So Hanush agreed? Without reservations?
Indeed.
Then I will fulfill my end of the bargain, without reservation.
Thank you, Lord of Kunstadt.
Enough formality. We'll have a drink. What do you say?
Cheers to the beautiful lady Yitka and the unhappy Lord Capon.
Here's to a good bargain!
He's gonna get married, doesn't even know. Let's go. What now? Anna. We're from Anna. Anna of Wustha.
God be with you, noble lady. There's something I'd like to ask of you.
God be with you. What would that be?
Your diplomatic support. And your money.
No beating around the bush, eh? I like that. But what do you want my money for?
Margrave Jobst's plan has some gaps, milady. We need to gather enough resources to-
To muster an army that Margrave can't afford on his own?
Christ. Be praised. You're astute.
I should say so. All sorts of people have their eyes on my money. And divining their intentions is a necessity. Although, between the two of us, it isn't hard to figure out what Liechtenstein is after.
How do you know Liechtenstein's behind it?
I know most of the people here very well. Many of them certainly have doubts- Many of them certainly have doubts about the Margreaves' plans. But they wouldn't dream of stating them aloud. While it seems that Lord Liechtenstein, on the contrary, sees his opportunity.
I'd say you have a better nose for people than most of this crud.
Not only for people, but also for good food and wine. And beneficial deals.
Then you're in the right place. This occasion provides all of those things.
The wine here is average. The cooks lack imagination. And I have yet to hear any interesting offers. So, to the point. What is it that Liechtenstein wants from me?
Nothing more than support and resources for an army to parley more effectively with Sigismund.
Nothing more? I'd say that's plenty. And why ask me for help? Why should I, of all people, take the risk?
You manage large estates. In return for your generosity, we offer you protection.
I've managed quite well up to now taking care of my own resources. If you want me to support you, you must give me a good reason. Perhaps a favour in return.
Do you have something in particular in mind?
Well, one of the guests here has something that shouldn't get into the wrong hands.
Who's that?
Haman Alder. Now, if you were to switch these papers for the ones he brought with him, I would support your proposal.
Alright, I'll help you. Or at least I'll give it a try.
Alder will surely have the papers in his saddlebags, which he left in the shed on the outer courtyard. Bring them to me, and put these there instead. But watch yourself. Oderin's groom has eyes everywhere.
Fuck. Fuck, man. Man. Always gotta do something.
What's that? I heard something. Hey! You! What are you doing here? No one's allowed in here!
I'm waiting here for you.
Oh. How's that?
I've been watching you for a while, and I have a feeling you do well to talk a little. Inconspectu dei.
Who in God's name are you?
In God's name indeed. I'm a priest, and I know a wretched sin-
Is it that obvious?
Don't blaspheme. It'll help you more to-
And in the morning, when I met him, I swore I never laid eyes on his daughter. Even though my back was scratched raw from our-
That's a mortal sin. Lying with a woman that you're not- and then lying about it too.
I... I'll go to hell for that, won't I?
You won't.
I'll start right away. Thank you, father.
Come on. Need your support. Well, this thing worked out for me. Luckily missed the psy.
I've got those papers from Alder for you.
Quiet! You don't have to announce it to everyone.
Milady, with all the clamour going on here, I can hardly hear my own thoughts. Here they are.
Hmm. You're more capable than I expected.
You're welcome. And now you're part of the borgen.
As agreed. I will support Liechtenstein's-
Thank you, noble lady. God will-
Yes, quite. But let's drink to our bargain, Godwin.
How could I refuse a toast with such a fine lady? To your health, Lady Anna.
And to the success of our efforts.
Getting too drunk. Oh, was that crazy?
Aye. Lots of people-
Gentlemen, I think we can raise our goblets to the successful conclusion of the negotiations.
Is this supposed to be your secret weapon?
Like I said, miracles happen where you least expect-
Wow, that game's so detailed.
Tell me. I bring nothing from the house of Oderin. But the widow of Walstein and Sir Bocek of Kunstadt will support our cause.
Both of them? Good heavens, what-
This is going to be a long story, and I could use a drink. So if you'll excuse me.
It would seem that we have all benefited from the break in these proceedings. New alliances have been formed. And I have also changed my plans. We shall still wait for Sigismund to withdraw his troops of his own accord. But we will wait with an army at our backs!
And how are we to raise an army? Wasn't it made clear at the meeting that no one wants to take the risk?
The only thing made clear was that each of us alone is weak, and that we could not find common ground. But that has now changed.
King Wenceslas is, by the will of God, the barbatum of all his subjects. Not only the Christians.
And if that's not enough, the houses of Liper and Kunstadt will unite and march side by side!
My niece Yitka will take young Lord Capon as her husband! Lords Kunstadt, Hanush, Radzig, and I will set out immediately. God willing, we will be back within three weeks along with an army.
Now those are words worthy of a nobleman.
My friend, I still believe that words are more powerful than swords. And our words will ring in a thousand voices to the glory of King Wenceslas!
Oh my god. I'm back to this, dude.
After we conquered the city, you promised to restore order immediately. And then I find out things are even more disordered than before!
Your majesty, we are sorry. We will, we will put it to rights.
You've already said that. I want to hear real solutions.
We will put more guards on the roads and toughen penalties. We can have a few captured bandits executed as an example to others.
We do not care about bandits. We care about rebellious nobles and burgers. What will you do with them? How will you solve the chaos in the town administration? The rebellious miners and the dismay yields? And how is it even possible that a rebellion against the king is smoldering here in the city?
What do you mean, sire?
I hear the resistance is coming from the Jewish quarter. From right under your noses. Why haven't you done anything?
We we don't know who is behind this. Without evidence, we cannot punish them.
Otto von Bergoff did not ask questions in Prague either. He acted. And I advise you to do the same. Find a couple of wretches in a hole somewhere. Point them to the Jewish quarter and give them free rein to do anything. The city's Jewish community was and still is on Wenceslas's side. They need a warning.
We we do not even have enough men to-
Magwart, could you spare a few men for a while?
Of course, sire. I'll assign them to Eric. He'll take care of it.
So you see, all you have to do is make sure the city rebels get their share. You could at least manage that, couldn't you? And if the thought should cross your minds that you would get rid of the Daps to the Jewish moneylanders this way, forget about it. Your Daps will remain. Up to the last Groschen. Only now you owe us directly. And while we are on the subject of money, has the yield from the mines finally matched last year's?
Sire, the deposits are dwindling, and mining is becoming increasingly difficult. And to make matters worse, the miners started rebelling.
Don't take us for a fool. They'll stop rebelling when you pay them proper wages.
Your majesty, we can't do that.
Silence! How dare you oppose the kingdom's protector? You're a bunch of incompetent sycophants! Chicken shits! Not any better than the scum hiding in the forest.
And drunks! Give them hell! Lazy fools, a lot of them.
How dare you? Some of you are even swelling right here in the city council meeting. This is unbelievable.
Remove this swillputt from the hall immediately.
I'm telling the truth. This whole council is a farce. The whole city knows it.
Lord of Zauschitz, your insolence just cost you your place on the council and a month in the dungeon.
But... But-
Hopefully that'll be enough for him to sober up. And if not, put him in the pillory for a while, bailiff.
I'll see to it as soon as the council is over, your majesty.
All I hear from you over and over again are excuses and prevarication. And results? None. I therefore place the city council under the authority of Sir Magwart von Aulitz, who is present here, with immediate effect. He will make sure you finally do your duty.
But sire, that would be a violation of the privileges granted to us as a free mining town.
Silence! I am the only guarantor of your rights. You have to earn your privileges, not hide behind them. During my brother's reign, this idleness was perhaps tolerated. But that is over now. You were given a few simple tasks. But instead of working on them, you idled in the baths and lined your pockets. And let the traitors cast their nets undisturbed. But unlike my brother, I am capable of creating order. And I assure you, I do not distinguish between those who stand in my way. Be they baggers, nobleman, or city councillors. You have two weeks to restore order in the city and increase mining output. I want clear results. And you answer only to me, and Sir Magwart von Aulitz now. No one else.
Damn. But I'm in charge.
The council is dismissed. You don't go anywhere, boy. Be so kind and remain here. Our throat has become rather dry. And we still wish to speak with our friend von Aulitz.
Yes. Sire. As you wish. Sire.
Between the two of us, Magwart, was I not perhaps too harsh on them? And speak candidly, we have had enough of false flattery.
Sire, you are harsh, but rightfully so. These councillors may need to be shown their place. You suffered their insolence for far too long. And the same is true of the Jews.
We know. Otto repeated to us several times that it is time to strike against them. We are glad he's not here. He would be intolerably self-satisfied if he knew we had heated him.
Boy, can't you see the king's cup is empty?
You tend to ask as if we were infernal. Boy-
Think you wanna read?
Pour us a monastic wine. The monks had a good year. We have concerns, friend. The Hungarians are rebelling. Our army is falling apart, and we have enemies here on all sides. Would we had a proper army instead of human mercenaries? They cannot be relied upon. And we are no closer to our goal now than a few months ago. Thank you. It is a good year. If our father were still alive, he would have been astonished by the mess that a few years of Wenceslas's reign brought us. With a single word, he would have put the nobility in their place and the country would flourish. God grant him eternal glory.
We won't need much more time. We'll arrest the traitor Oderin, and the rest will fall in line.
You say the others will be brought into line, but what do you know of them? We know only a few of them. But there's a fortress standing on every damn hill here. What side are their lords on?
We'll find out soon enough, sire.
If only Wenceslas were not such a stubborn ass and relinquished that throne, then he has no use for anyway. The nobility, on the other hand, found a ruler like him very useful. They made a puppet out of him.
Once you restore order, they'll join you. All you have to do is promise them the privileges they lost during Wenceslas's reign.
First, they'd have to be willing to make peace at least among themselves. Jobz does everything he can to sow chaos so that he himself emerges victorious in the end. This business makes me thirsty. Pour me some of that red, boy.
I think Jobz is just waiting for the right moment. He'll switch sides when it suits him.
Maybe. But first I'll have to conquer a few more cities and get a couple more lords on my side. Then they take the threat of war seriously. And Hungary. If Bohemia is a wasp nest, then Hungary is a viper's lair.
You will follow in his footsteps, sire. As soon as you get the chance.
But the wine is good here. To your health, Magwart. And to your health too, boy. May your children grow in the land ruled by a good king.
Thank you, sire. You you are too magnanimous.
Why? You did a good job. You can be proud of yourself.
To your health, your majesty.
First, we need to crack down on these troublemakers.
We're working on it. While the council was meeting, Otto von Bergoff and his men set out for Raborsch. Oderin won't give you any more trouble.
He and Rutard are in it together. Once we get Oderin, we can handle Rutard easy. Raborsch will be yours. After all, Otto has already got Malishov.
I appreciate your confidence, sire.
But the devil knows there are a lot more strongholds to conquer here.
Pour the king red wine, boy.
Very sorry.
We shall have white. We have had enough of red.
White it is. Quickly! With Raborsch's force, others will follow.
I think von Bergoff's little contraption will find its use again. I think von Bergoff's little contraption will find its use again.
There'll need be. We could use it to raise this town all too. And I have some suggestions for other candidates.
Hold it.
Not so fast, my friend. It's a wondrous tool, but we can't rely on it forever.
But to bring it here to the square and point it at the city hall? Those sycophants would only benefit from a warning like that.
It's a splendid idea, but it won't be necessary. The councillors are quite fearful enough already that they can't hide nothing from us.
There's been enough fretting, sire. You shall see. Soon we will drink to the conquest of another fortress.
You are right. So then, to a victory. And you, boy, will you drink with us? So that you shall have something to tell your children and grandchildren.
To, uh... To victory, sire.
To today's and those of the future.
Oh, you guys are dead. Oh my god, now it just keeps going back and forth.
What are you doing?
There we go. There you go, we finished those quests. That'll be it for those two. Man, those were long. Sorry for the long videos, but we had to finish those two quests, so... Appreciate you guys tuning in, thank you guys again. See you guys in the next one. Peace.